Okay, today is Tuesday, October 18th. It's 1:00 PM. This is Prescott City Council Workshop. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
President.
Mayor Protem Rusin. Councilwoman Kuntalmi.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenny.
Yes.
All are present.
All right, this is a discussion item, discussion and possible action regarding the sale and redevelopment of property located at 201 South Cortez Street, our current hold City Hall.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Tyler Goodman with the City Manager's Office, and this is a big day, I think, for everybody, and we can see so much interest from the community, which is wonderful. I'm going to give a brief presentation to you and go over some of the process we've seen to date, the bidding teams, the bid amounts, some other relevant information, and next steps for the council, and then we will open it to the council for dialogue and some back and forth, and then potentially to the public as the mayor sees fit. So we'll get right in and get started. As far as an overview of the process to this point, we first advertised a request for proposals for the sale and redevelopment of this location back in November of 2021. There was a mandatory site visit by all interested bidders on April 28th, and we had a great turnout at that. They came here, they visited the site, they toured, they asked questions, we went over all the relevant criteria in the RFP document. And then on May 26th of this year, bids were due, and the bidders were Silo Holdings, Ponderoso Hotel Management, which submitted two projects, one was a multifamily, and the other was a hotel project, J-Cor Partners, and Stro Architecture. At that point, we sent the information, all the bid packets, which was a lot of material, to the Facility Optimization and Property Usage Commission, I never get tired of saying that. They met three times in executive session, and they reviewed each proposal in depth, and they had a lot of good, long conversations about all the proposals. They recommended a ranking of bids to the council, a top three, and that came in at Stro Architecture, Ponderoso Hotel Management for their hotel project, and Silo Holdings. And the council has narrowed it down to two at this point, which is what we are bringing to you today, which is Stro Architecture and Silo Holdings. The City Council also met three times in executive session, and again narrowed it down to those two finalists. I wanted to go over briefly the request for proposal criteria, and I tried to boil it down so that we don't get into too much of a too detailed conversation about this, but I took an excerpt from the RFP document, which I'll read because it's very relevant. Said, "The City Council is seeking highly qualified applicants that specifically propose a purchase of the property and redevelopment to multi-story mixed use, a combination of retail, dining, living, office, or other usage. The city desires a project that builds upon the downtown redevelopment momentum, incorporates pedestrian-friendly features, and enhances the city's economic base." Again, that comment, as well as the whole RFP document, was reviewed and approved by council, so that's what we were looking for, and that's what the bidders placed their packages together for the City Council here now to consider. I will say that both finalists have presented a mixed-use project, both have a combination of retail, dining, hotel space, some meeting space associated with that, as well as long-term rental space. And council, again, has reviewed and seen those details in executive sessions. Also, I wanted to give you a breakdown of what the commission, the facility commission, as well as the council, what we were using in executive sessions to discuss and weights associated with those items, which was the approach to the project, and some people had some questions on, well, what does that mean, the approach to the project? So I took just a couple excerpts from the RFP document. When we talked about the approach, which accounted for 30% of the weight, we talked about having the bidder submit representative site plans and building elevations, which council has reviewed and seen, describing unique design elements and features as part of their redevelopment project, describing how their plan fits within the historic nature of the surrounding area, providing proof of financial viability to complete the project, and to describe any incentives that they wished for the council to consider as part of their bid, among a few other things, but those were the big ones. Next, experience of the proposed team and availability within their current workload to complete the project, and that was weighted at 20%. The purchase price proposal was weighted at 30%, and the ability to complete a project within 36 months at 20%. And that's something the council, we had discussed with you as we approved the RFP, wanting this project done in a pretty expeditious manner to take advantage and so that this land doesn't sit unused or underdeveloped for too long of a time. Getting into the project teams, I'll start on the left, Stro Architecture, Douglas Stro from Stro Architecture, Michael Hissiung from Phoenix Rising Investments, James Murphy from Willmang Construction, Gillian Haley from Haley Construction, Raymond Zogob from BHG Commercial, Danielle Faroletto from Small Giants, which is a marketing firm, and Michael Kovalas from Eris Hospitality Management, also Hasiyampa Inn, if you're more familiar with that. And Silo Holdings, Stephen Shumway, Shane Shumway, and their general contractor, Porter Brothers, and their architect, PK Architects. Some people have asked, well, what are relevant projects that each of these teams have done in the recent past? And just taking a few from their submittals, if we start with Stro, they listed as part of their project team, they had their hands in these following projects, the Firehouse Plaza here downtown, Elks Theater, Tis Art Gallery, and County Seat, just to name a few, they had some others listed in that document that you've reviewed. And for Silo Holdings, they've listed, of course, the Hilton Garden Inn, which you're all familiar with, and the Train Trestle and Sam Hill Warehouse, that's associated with that site. They also listed a project in Flagstaff, for the city of Flagstaff, a downtown redevelopment project, and a project in Cholo, Arizona, which is also a mixed use, which had a combination of dining, hospitality, and office space. So that's kind of a flavor of who these project teams are and some of the most, more recent projects and relevant projects they've completed. For the bid amounts, Stro Architecture has given a final bid of 2.5 million, and Silo Holdings also has a bid of 2.5 million. They submitted a couple of options, $50,000 more if no asbestos or environmental issues are found, and $150,000 more if the utilities in the alley here are relocated by the city or don't need to be relocated. I will tell you that as part of the due diligence process, the City Council wanted us as staff to move forward with looking at a building material survey and an environmental survey, both of which have come back. We did find that there is asbestos that would be remediated as part of this site of removing the building, so that would negate that 50,000. And the $150,000 for utilities, we did speak with Public Works, and they were clear that utilities would not need to be impacted as part of a redevelopment project, at least not in the alley. Most of the utilities are connected on Cortez Street, just so you're aware of that. And those are the bid amounts. And for next steps, the council today could select a winning bid and then direct staff to enter contract negotiations. While that is occurring, the project design would be reviewed with staff, but also it would go to the Preservation Commission. The project would also be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and as well as the Water Issue Subcommittee, most likely go through that process. And then the contract, project design, and recommendations from the various commissions would come to council for consideration at some point in the future. We don't exactly have that laid out perfectly at this point, but those are generally the next steps. And with that, that's my presentation to you, but happy to answer any questions or open it to you for dialogue.
Thank you, Tyler. I do want to mention the fact that the Facilities Optimization and Property Utilization Group evaluated the need for new City Hall very extensively over the past few years and concluded that it had to be close to the Courthouse Plaza. So at the time, when we were looking for potential property in the area, the concept of having to relocate all of city operations off-site for as long as three years was really not something that was a legitimate option. And when the property that became available at the corner of Sheldon and North Monizuma occurred, and our ability to acquire that really allowed the full redevelopment of this property that we're contemplating now. So we have to review not only the proposals from a financial, design, performance, capability perspective, but also keep in mind the historic and cultural character of the Courthouse Plaza to make sure that the final selection fits in with the character of our downtown area. Also, the scope and size of it doesn't overwhelm the surrounding buildings, especially in comparison to the courthouse itself. So those considerations need to be included in our deliberations. So it's a deliberative process, and I know a lot of people in the community have talked to me about, well, it should have been more publicly discussed. But it was necessary for us to be able to protect the proprietary design proposals from each one of the bidders to make sure that their efforts were properly protected from other bidders possibly copying or utilizing some of their design elements. So that's why it was necessary to consider the first few rounds within the scope of executive session, and at this point now, we can deliberate and make a final selection here today. So with that said, where would our next steps be, Tyler?
It's really up to the council to determine if you want to talk about what you understand of the two finalists and their proposals, you're welcome to do that. I know that our legal staff has provided you with some guidance onto what topics can or cannot be discussed at this point publicly, and so if you follow that, but it's really up to the council to have that discussion and, of course, hear from the public, I'm sure you want to do that.
Matt, do you want to kind of review briefly what this additional information that has been provided and what can and can't be considered?
Yes, Mayor, Council, thank you. I think we're at the point now where the rubber sort of hits the road and we start making some real decisions, and you have to take an actual action to direct staff to start negotiating with one of two people. We think, as of today, probably the most important things you'll be looking at are the project teams and whether or not they can deliver a project that you're looking for, and the terms of the RFP, whether or not each or either of them have met your expectations. So I think those are the two main, if you're looking for a pulse or some guidance to focus on today.
Thank you, Matt. Anybody want to offer their comments or concerns to begin with?
I'd like to hear from the public.
I suppose we could start off with that.
Okay.
City Clerk.
Sandy Griffiths.
Thank you, Sarah. Mr. Mayor, Protem Rusin, Council, great to see you today. Sandy Griffiths, Yavapai County Contractors Association. First and foremost, I applaud each and every one of you and the Optimization Committee for the planning that has gone into this redevelopment project that's so critical for this city. I'm here as your industry representative to give voice supporting Stro Architecture for this redevelopment project. Mr. Stro and his team have heart, but that doesn't go without saying that Mr. Shumway and Silo Holdings and his team also have heart. We've seen what Shumway has brought to the city of Prescott, and it is indeed magnificent. Our industry feels that Mr. Stro understands better the history of Prescott and building community, and that's what this project is really going to be about, is bringing in community. And because of that reason, I'm here as the industry representative, once again proud to support our voice for Mr. Stro and his design and development team. So thank you very much. You have a difficult decision, I know that, but we know you will make the right one. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Jim Thomas.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Jim Thomas. I am the CEO and founder of Aspire Sports that took over the old Sears Building at the Gateway Mall. And I'm just here today to say thank you guys for your service. I love Prescott more than anybody in the world, this is an amazing town, and I think what you guys are about to do is a very exciting project. So for me, it's all good news for Prescott, Arizona, but I'd just like to say I also advocate for Stro Architecture. They did our project, they are more than qualified, and really, really, they're a great choice, they're local, and so I think they know how to navigate the city system, which you guys might not know, but it's a little difficult sometimes. But anyways, I think they would be excellent choice for this, and again, I'm really excited about this project, I'm excited about Prescott, and thank you again for your guys' service, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you for your investment up there with Aspire Sports, it's very exciting.
Roy Smith.
Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm happy to be here. I was in Prescott in 1967, that's when I first came here. This is a different town, but what I was reminded of when I came here was its history, its cowboy, its history, its Whiskey Row, its rodeo occurs once a year, and that was Prescott, and that was really Prescott. But Prescott is not the Prescott now that it was then, so I'm fully supportive of the Stro Architecture plan, it's a bold vision, great concept, and I think it complements Whiskey Row. We don't need more Whiskey Row hotels, we need something that complements what we already have. We mentioned about cultural heritage. England has a cathedral that was built in 1066, we also have the Ferris wheel. So we have to embrace the future, don't disregard it, but move on, and I think this architecture is Prescott moving on, and I think it's going to be attractive for people that want to come here and see Prescott as more than what we've always characterized it as. Not to demean that past, we're all part of it, you all contributed to it. I didn't very much, but I live here, I love this place, and I'm looking forward to this new architecture in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy.
Ralph Redarte.
How are you guys? Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Ralph Redarte, I live at 251 South Mountain Vernon, and I lived in Prescott for 83 years, and I've seen changes. And I've also seen Doug Stro, and I've been working with Doug Stro on many, many projects, and we've gotten several awards where they were applicable. But anyway, it's, in talking to the people around the area, they all support shop locally, and that's what I'm asking you to do, shop here. We have the qualifications of Haley Construction, we have the qualifications of Doug Stro. We've got qualified people living here that you need to really get out there and look at them and see what they can do. It's amazing, and I like to get involved in seeing what this town is because I've seen it grow, and I really would appreciate your concerns about what we're going to have down here for us to enjoy. Many, many times do we think that we need to move on and go to the next century of design work, we don't. People come here because they fall in love with what we have here. Living on the street that I live, people are just dying to live on that street, and I say, you know, there's other places you can go to, but as far as what these gentlemen on Stro Architectural Committee to do this, they're more than qualified, they're excellent builders, they're excellent people, and I encourage you to do this for them, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph.
Grant Casada.
Councilmen and women, good to see you all, thanks for the opportunity. Well, the great thing is, obviously, we have thriving capitalism in our community, we have two great teams that are presenting an awesome new project, this site right here. So a lot of very competent individuals, and both teams are very competent and capable at getting this project done for the community and adding value to the local economy and to our local citizens. I might come at it more from the perspective of a citizen mindset, much like when I ran for City Council, but, you know, I'm from Prescott, my wife and I are from Prescott, raised our kids here, and I would just ask each and every one of you, as you continue to, I guess, think about this choice and who is going to best represent, you have two competent, capable teams, but the need for us as a community, as we continue to grow and expand, what does that look like to have people within the community that bring value and see value within Prescott, and as we continue to grow and want to take ownership really of our values and our core moral doctrines here within Prescott as a community and the region, and want to expand upon that within Prescott? So I know it's a very difficult decision, it is two great teams behind us that are already bringing plenty of value to Prescott and the region, so a lot for you guys to think about, but like I'd mentioned for myself, really who and which team will provide the best amount of ownership and citizenship when it comes to the paid dividends moving forward and how they add value back into the community for years to come, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Grant.
Dr. Askari.
Mr. Mayor, Council ladies and Councilman, thank you for allowing me to be here. Mr. Michael Lamar, City Manager, pleasure to see your faces. Doug Stro is shining more than my head. He's been a true beautiful person, I've been working with him for past 13, 14 years in town, he built a couple of design and architect, a couple of our medical facilities, we're working to do some other project with God willing. He is accountable, he's affordable, and he's local. That's my support to Doug Stro. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Askari.
And I do have one hand raised in the Zoom, Deb Dalacetus.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah, hi. I just wondered if the council would be able to share the qualifications that they looked at of the two firms? I don't think that's proprietary information, so the history of projects that they've previously done. I know I did look up on the Arizona Corporation Commission website, I looked up the one group, not Mr. Stro, but the other group, and it looks like they've only been incorporated for two years, so I'm wondering if council would be willing to elaborate on the qualifications. Thank you.
Well, I know that in executive session, we considered a lot of the qualifications, but I think it's probably appropriate that we can mention now in the public the two groups as far as their financial capability to complete the project and some of their experience.
If that's not proprietary, so you can share that?
If I'm not mistaken, Tyler shared with us just a few minutes ago examples of projects that each group had done. Maybe you could do that again for anybody who missed it the first time around?
I'm happy to do that, and depending on what the council wants, you may ask that question of the bidders if you so desire, they may be able to give some more insight. As you can see on the screen, these are the project teams, I don't think I'll read through all of them again, but these are the project teams. For relevant projects recently, as part of their bid package, Stro Architecture mentioned a few, Firehouse Plaza, Elks Theater, Tis Art Gallery, the County Seat, and there were several others, but just picked a few. And Silo submitted Hilton Garden Inn downtown here, Train Trestle associated with that, and the Sam Hill Warehouse, a Flagstaff, city of Flagstaff project in their downtown for redevelopment, and a Cholo project in Cholo, Arizona, mixed use with dining, hospitality, and office space, those were submitted as part of their package.
Very good, thank you, Tyler. And I would mention the fact that James Murphy from Willmang was the construction manager for Prescott Airport Terminal. Michael Zhang, who's done many large projects down in Phoenix, certainly has long-term experience with major project development. I think anybody who's been around any length of time knows Doug Stro's involvement in a lot of different projects, whether it be renovation or total build from scratch. And Michael Kovalas over there at Hasiyampa Inn continues to be able to manage the great Hasiyampa Inn, so we're pleased with that, and Michael and Shane Shumway have done large projects throughout the state, up in Flagstaff, and of course, the Hilton Garden Inn here that was completed, you know, on time in a very impressive manner. So we've got really two groups that are very strong, and it'll be a challenge to select one or the other, and whoever we don't select, I just want to make sure that they know how much we appreciate their quality and their experience, and it'll be a tough decision Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope you don't mind me starting the council discussion, but I thought I'd chime in early. I remember when each of these groups came and presented to us in an executive session, where they each came privately, individually, and one of the things that really impressed me about the Doug Stro group was a large portion of their presentation was historical. They had actually gone back and found in archives pictures of this area and what it looked like historically and what was on this property historically, and they really did their research to look at this area that we want to redevelop, and how they approached it to fit in historically but also to be modern. Even today, somebody said, oh, it's a big day, you're going to make a big decision today, and she said, I saw the Stro project, and she says, it looks kind of contemporary and modern, and it's like, well, you got to look ahead to the next 50 years, not just in the past, and I think it's a good blend where we're honoring our past, we're preserving our past, but also moving into the future with this project. I also want to speak to the fact that this is a local team, and I think that's very important, that we support local businesses, contractors, and individuals who have been in our community for a long time and have contributed to what our community is now. And so for those two reasons particularly, I'm very in favor of Doug Stro's project.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Moore, I mean, Councilman Tenny, please.
I think we're in a great position here that we really can't go wrong with either one. Both groups have a proven track record of high-quality development that fits well with the historic character of our downtown, and that's been mentioned by many of our folks, both in emails that we've received and other communications we've received, and then today in person is a priority for them, of course. Both groups have offered very competitive bids that came in right around where the assessment that we had for the property, and they're both right in the same ballpark there. Based on the information that we've received in our previous meetings and whatnot, both groups have shown full ability to be able to meet the requirements of the RFP and to be able to... be able to get things done in a timely manner and with their financing and the other pieces that we asked for, for sure. Both of their designs were terrific. We had a chance to look at those in depth. They're conceptual in nature. One of the things that I think set the Stroh group apart was that their design included a larger public accessible area along Cortez Street. That was attractive to me, and I think, as we talked a little bit earlier, there were other council members who mentioned that as a plus, for sure. Pedestrian access was specifically mentioned as a desirable component of the RFP, and I think the Stroh group leaned toward that even more than the Silo group, although both excellent presentations and both excellent designs. And I'll go back once again to, I don't think we can go wrong here. If six other people would go the other way, you could convince me. But I would lean towards Stroh for the pedestrian access component of things. It's clear that public sentiment, at least here today in this room, that has been expressed leans that direction. And I do also think that, to the extent that their team, some of their team, of course, is from out of town. There's nothing wrong with that. But there's a strong local component there that I think is a plus as well. So, that's where I would lean as well currently.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. So, for me, I'm in line with Councilman Tenny. I think we have two very qualified and capable teams, and we're lucky because I think that it's possible that this is going to be, in some ways, a challenging project for anyone to execute on. And so, the fact that there are two groups that are very excited about doing that is good. I go back to the determining factors that Tyler listed out in the beginning of the presentation today. Approach to the project, which was listed out as being 30%. For me, that lands in the Stroh category because the pedestrian access, their community orientation towards it, they just, that was one of their shining points in their presentation, clearly, for me. Experience, I lean a little bit towards Stroh on that just because they do have a local experience, a bit more of a local experience, and I think that matters. One of the things that's important to me is Doug Stroh has served a serious length of time on the Preservation Commission, and this project, no matter what happens, is going to get chewed around on by Preservation Commission, it's going to get chewed around on by planning and zoning, and then it's going to probably go to Water Issues Subcommittee, as Tyler mentioned, and then it'll come back here again, and we'll have to kind of see where it's gone. And so, this is a very iterative process. But the fact that we have someone local who's been on Preservation Commission, who knows what that process looks like and has shepherded many projects through that process, means a lot to me. I think about the purchase. I think they both more or less came in at the same price, so I think that's kind of evenly weighted there. Ability to complete, for me, again, I go back to that local component as Stroh knowing the process and knowing the inner workings. Some of the people from the public have spoke to that today, knowing how to work through the process. I also think about FOPU as a recommending committee to this project. And one of the things that folks don't realize is that when we sit up here on this dais, none of us are experts in anything, really, although some of us in specific fields. But we have to rely on the expertise of staff a lot of the times, whether that's our fire chief or our police chief, you know, talking about those specific areas. And I think of FOPU as that same thing, right? FOPU is made up of a lot of local people who have expertise in this capacity of determining how to move forward with a project like this. And FOPU ranked, and not everyone had the same top choices, but when I talked to various members of the FOPU Committee, they all said that Stroh was at the top of the list pretty much as a consensus choice. And so, that means a lot to me, and I kind of want to value the work that FOPU did. We have spent a lot of time kind of sorting through this process, but man, those people on FOPU have done it really diligently, and they looked at it a lot, you know, they looked at it from the very beginning in their phases, and they weren't fortunate enough to get paid to do that process. Not that $500 is a lot, but it's still an income. So, those are the big deciding factors for me, and I would, along with Councilman Tenny and Councilman Moore, I would lean toward the Stroh project because of those basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman can tell me.
Thank you very much. I'm going to echo what everybody else said. We're very fortunate to have such talent in our area and want to come here. And I'm very familiar with both of your projects. I think they're great. You know, I came into this, too, having seen both of the designs, and I had to remind myself, and I want to remind everybody, that now this iteration has to go through the historic preservation. This morning, I did shout out to Kat Moody and asked basically, how much teeth do we have in this next process, understanding where we go from here? It is a big stretch, you know? We talk about some of the design elements in both of them. And I do hope that, you know, one of the things I liked about Silo was it was a smaller team. I think they're able to pivot a little bit quicker, expeditiously in this process if there are going to be changes. I did like the fact that you were, you know, you've got a good team, a great designer working with you, and as some of these issues do come up, how easily will you be able to pivot and to be able to comply with some of the historic preservation requirements, I would say. So, I do hope you listen, and I wish there was a way we could have flipped this. We could have finalized the design after historic preservation and put it out to the public, but we can't do that. But I do think we're both very capable of both of these designs, and it'll be interesting to see how we go from here. Thanks for applying.
Councilman Tenny.
Just really quickly, in 15 seconds, I want to echo one of the things that Councilman Montoya said. I really appreciate his focus on the expert advice that we receive from FOPU. I think when we have staff or commissions that make a recommendation to us, we need to have very specific additional information to go in a direction that does not align with their recommendations. And that's not the case here. It's often not the case, and it's certainly not the case here. So, I appreciate that, Brandon.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Well, as you know, this is a very highly visible project, and we're going to have lots of public input. After carefully reviewing both applicants, I am leaning towards the Stroh team. They've been committed to our community over the years for, I don't know, what, 30? 30 years? How long have you been here?
32.
32.
Yes.
And so, I'm, for that reason, I think that, and I'd like to thank Silo for their application, too. We really appreciate them. So, I'm just going to be leaning more towards the Stroh team. Thank you.
Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank the public for coming out. It's awesome to see you out there and concerned about this whole situation, and not really concerned, but interested. And so, thank you very much again. I think what sold it for me was the fact that Haley Construction was attached to this group. I've known the Haley family for a long time, and they have been involved in some incredible reconstruction projects here in Prescott. And, you know, I just can't help but think that that's not going to change with this project. As a matter of fact, I think that this project will be a Sentinel project for Prescott and for Haley Construction. And so, that's not to minimize the rest of your team, but I have a couple of questions, if you could answer them for me. Like the Mayor Protem was saying, you know, it's, there's four on the Silo holding side, there's seven on the Stroh side. So, I've always kind of gone by the KISS concept and keep it simple. So, with that being said, with staff having to deal with you, who speaks for you?
I do.
And so, with that being said, as far as the 60-foot height limit, is that something you can work with?
Yes, absolutely.
And make it a viable project?
Yes.
What about, what's coming up economically for, you know, not only this area, but for, you know, our entire country? That's got to, you know, make you wonder. Supply chain things, labor? What makes you think you can get the project done in these times, in a certain period of time?
Well, first, I founded my company during the Great Recession and was successfully executed projects during that point in time, which, and prior to that, was on Wall Street and part of and involved with a number of commercial real estate projects, both on the equity and the debt, including workouts, including public-to-private transit, anyways. I'm not overly concerned with the future potential recessionary environment, and that's really, a lot of our wording in the project itself is really talking about long-term, a long-term focus. And really, because of a long-term focus, it kind of smoothes out those ups and downs you get during the economic cycle. So, we were very intentional in talking about the long term because it has, beyond the meaning of the design, it also has a financial meaning as well. So, and that was the intention of even really highlighting that, those two words.
So, Michael, if staff has an issue?
Yes.
The buck stops with you?
It does.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Any other comments or concerns? Well, I will say that, you know, this is such a unique redevelopment. I don't think there's another piece of property within a couple of blocks of the Courthouse Plaza that'll have the long-term impact that redeveloping this project will. You know, when it was dedicated, the current City Hall, 1962, we certainly want to think about what this new building will mean to the Courthouse Plaza area for the next 60 years. Maybe Jillian will still be around. I don't know about the rest of us. But that's something that we have to consider. So, once we make this election, then I want the public to know that this is not a final design concept. Once we've made the selection of the winning bidder, then their renderings and their design will be exposed for review. Obviously, the Historic Preservation Commission will look at it as well. So, and then they have to go through their due diligence and be able to look what's underneath the surface here and the parking and the subsurface and potential for underground parking and other parts of the overall development. So, it does, will take some time, and I'm sure it'll evolve a little bit as the project goes forward. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. And I just would like to remind everyone in the public that the purchase price monies will go directly towards paying down the debt of our internal loan for the new City Hall. So, we seem to be retiring debt around here a lot.
I like that concept. Well, if there's no other concerns or considerations or public comment, then I guess it's up to someone to make a motion.
Mayor, I move we go with Stroh Architecture.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to select Stroh, the Stroh team, for award of this bid. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Congratulations. And Shane and Stephen, I really want to thank you for your efforts in this bidding process. And again, we can't thank you enough for the great building and developments you did for the Hilton Garden Inn. It was, it's a terrific project and something that I'm sure you're proud of, and we're proud to have you. Michael, since you're the spokesman, do you want to make any final comments now that you're the selected developer?
Actually, no.
Okay, you're going to delegate it to Doug.
I just want to thank everyone for your confidence in our team and in me, and knowing that we have the City of Prescott's best interest at heart.
Right.
And I've been working on this for 32 years, and it's going to be a great project, and I'm looking forward to working with the city. And one thing about us being local, if, you know, Kat needs to talk to me or meet with me or anybody else on staff, I'm a mile away. So, you're in good hands, and I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Well, I think we made our decision here, so this meeting is adjourned.